Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Commission Meeting of San Clemente. On today, Wednesday, December 21st, it is 6:00 PM approximately, or thereafter. And I call this meeting to order. And we'll first have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Karen Prescott-Loeffler.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undoubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no special orders of business. Minutes, the minutes from our meeting of December 7th.
Chair, I should do the roll call before we move on.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Staff was made aware that Commissioner Davis and Chair Pro Tem Camp will not be in attendance tonight. So with that, I will call roll. Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Commissioner McCacken?
Here.
Commissioner Prescott-Loeffler?
Here.
Vice Chair Cosgrove?
Here.
And Chairman McCann?
Here. Thank you very much. Moving on to the minutes. Any comments, or anybody would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Thank you. Motion by Prescott-Loeffler, second by Crandall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Astain.
So, four approved and one abstention by McCacken. Next item, number seven, the Consent Calendar, Traffic Calming Update. Normally it would be on the consent calendar, but we have speaker cards. I know there's people that would like to speak on this issue tonight, so we'll just have the item now not on the consent calendar. Is that correct?
You would want to just take a vote to pull it from the consent calendar. And then, just so you're aware, we do have staff here that will be able to provide a verbal report on that item.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to have a vote?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and move the poll item on the consent calendar.
Seven A.
Seven A.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, five zero. So, do we have a staff report then on the traffic calming at Faro?
Good evening. Zach Pontson, Assistant City Engineer. Tonight with me, I have Ryan Kim, our Senior Civil Engineer/Traffic Engineer. Tonight, we're here to provide an update on the Camino Faro topic that came before you about two months ago. And as you recall, Planning Commission directed staff to report back after meeting with the HOA to see if we can find any other additional alternatives. So, I don't have a presentation, so tonight's just an oral update. And I've tried to get pretty in-depth in my agenda report of what we've done since then. And one thing I will update is, on Monday of this week, we also had another meeting with three members of the HOA Board and a couple different other members of the neighborhood, including the main petitioner. And so on Monday, we followed up with a third meeting, or an additional meeting, and talked about some of the alternatives. And in conclusion, staff is still recommending the caution advisory yellow fifteen mile an hour signs in both the uphill and downhill direction, and also a curb signs in the uphill and downhill direction. The HOA Board and the residents also asked if we can increase police activity in the area. Staff has no problem asking for that to happen. There was renewed discussions about whether or not speed bumps can come in. Can the street be made one-way? Can there be a cul-de-sac? And as you can see in my staff report, a lot of those alternatives are just simply, staff's not going to be recommending any of those for the situation. Just as a reminder, this street did not qualify for traffic calming. The street has grades that range from 5% up to almost 11%. And per industry standard and traffic calmings, the city's adopted traffic calming policy, we don't put speed cushions on streets above 5%. So with that, staff's available for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Mr. Crandall?
Yeah, just real quick, there were, I think, eight communications from the public with concerns, and I think we're probably going to have some comments. Do you have any specific responses to any of those, or do you just fall back on the report?
We did get a lot of email communications from this. And in regards to the speed bumps, I'm going to stick with, the street is simply just too steep to put in speed bumps. In regards to the line of sight, sorry, I didn't bring that up. You guys had asked about that, too, on the previous one. Staff is still investigating that. We will be looking at each and every intersection out there. During that field meeting with the HOA members, you know, there definitely is going to be some concerns. It's pretty obvious that there's going to be increased red curbing out there for line of sight. Some of these streets definitely need it, and we will probably be coming back in, we'll probably look at the first meeting of February, likely. That's a tentative date through where we'll be bringing back some red curb recommendations that'll have to come to Planning Commission and then City Council. That should help some of the line of sight issues that we brought up at the first meeting, and a lot of the discussions that were brought up in some of those email communications.
Yeah, hey Zach. I spent some time on that street, and I do think the line of sight's a big problem. So, I'm glad you're going to follow up on that, and we'll see what you come back with on more red curb. But let me ask you about that. Does cars on the street help in the traffic calming? Or would it not help if there were cars? I mean, what do you, you know, does having that street full of cars actually promote slower speeds? Or does it not make a difference? Or would having that street free of cars promote slower traffic?
I'm going to let Ryan correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that's one of our criteria.
Yeah, I'm just asking you in your experience, or maybe it's just not a factor. Maybe it's just not something to, you know, to be weighed. But just curious if, if you had an opinion on it?
Oh, from my experience, yes. If we have more cars parking on the side of streets, yes, there is some speed reductions would happen.
In theory?
Yes.
Okay. Just, you know, in my observations, when you see a street, a collector's street full of cars in the middle of a weekday, you know, it just tells me that it's just a parking lot for the neighborhood. It's not people coming and going. I mean, those cars are there probably days at a time, maybe. And so I'm just curious if having them there helps or not. The other thing is, in my experience driving that street, besides finding it difficult to pull out with a poor line of sight because the cars are there, I experienced a lot of tailgating on, I was going 20 miles an hour, maybe 25 at the most. And residents that live in that community would come right up on me, and then they'd turn on their street. Which tells me it's not necessarily commuters, people who live there in a hurry. Has the HOA done proactive communication to their community to say, "Hey, neighbor, we all live here. We're all concerned about the traffic and the speeds. Can we all keep it down?" Have they done proactive education, outreach? In the letters that we got, the strings that were being pulled were "safety, there's going to be an accident." How much has the HOA done to communicate to the residents there, who are part of the problem? In my experience, being tailgated, having someone turn down the street, clearly they live there. What have they done to communicate the concerns and the issues of safety and slow down on that street?
As staff, I'm not 100%, you know, aware of all their communications with their residents. At our field meeting, we did, as staff, bring up that as a potential issue that could be done from their activity, for their action. And I cited an example of the Coast HOA actually used to have this Neighborhood Watch HOA program. And I'm not, and I, we discussed it a little bit at the field meeting, and I'm not sure what the end result is. So I'm picturing an HOA member sitting out there and, and, I apologize.
I saw that in your presentation last night, and I wasn't exactly sure what that was. But to me, it's, this is, you know, for all, some of us who have been around on these commissions and so forth, this is a constant issue in every city. It's not unique, it's not special. We all, we see this all the time. So, you know, part of it is, if, and this is a tight neighborhood, too, right? This is a collector's street for just that neighborhood. And I'm wondering, to me, constant reinforcing, constant education is a helpful thing. And that's kind of why you're going with the signs, right? That's going to help remind people, "Hey, it's 25, you're going 35, slow down."
Correct. And those advisory signs, you know, I feel they are impactful. And when you're in a curvy road and you see a sign up there and it's telling you you've got a curve ahead, it's telling you to slow down.
Yep.
And it works for me, and it works for, you know, most of the people I'm driving with.
For the people who are here and maybe watching the meeting, would you just reiterate why you feel a speed bump or speed cushion on a hillside street is not appropriate?
Yes, one of the big reasons is grade is especially around 10% or 11% as per my measurements. So per our manual for traffic, the speed hump policy, we have a threshold of 6%. So above 6%, we are not recommended to install any speed hump.
So that's because of the manual, but why does the manual say that?
Because if it is too steepy, because easy to lose the control of drivers.
So it would make it more dangerous, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Are there sections of the street that are 5% or below where you think they could be installed?
The lower section closest to Frontera has several hundred feet where it ranges from 5% to that 6%. That distance, as I mentioned in the staff report, I don't think is good enough to put in one single hump. It'd almost be right near the stop sign.
Okay.
And so you effectively, especially on the downhill people, they're already approaching a stop sign at that point. They really shouldn't be speeding at that point. And so the effectiveness of putting a single hump at that very low end of the community, I just don't think will have an impact. If there is ongoing cut-through traffic, who's familiar with the area and doing it on a daily basis, they would soon learn after the first trip that there's only one hump, and then going up the hill would continue their normal practice, since it would have to be pretty, it'd have to be located pretty close to that intersection. And what we have to do is, we have to notice the street, that it's 25 miles an hour as you're on a street at the beginning, and then when there's a hump, you actually have to give advance warning before that, that now there's a speed bump ahead, 15. And so there has to be certain distances between that 25 miles an hour and that 15 miles an hour, and then the actual cushion itself. And so, you know, could we try to squeeze one in? There is potential for the very limit of, you know, pushing our standards. I just don't recommend it because I don't think it'd be effective.
Right. When you met, when you had your meeting with HOA representatives, were their concerns focused on a particular section of the street, or is it the entire length of it?
I think we had it for the most, the entire length.
Okay.
And a lot of focus being on, you know, that cut-through traffic that's coming through the neighborhood. And, you know, ultimately, it's hard to see both ends of the street at the same time, so you can't really monitor that cut-through traffic unless you're following and driving them.
Yeah.
With them to see it.
Yeah.
Unless you have two people on walkie-talkies, you really almost can't monitor both ends at the same time.
Yeah.
During my, I've been out there probably a good four to five hours now on different meetings and my own self-trips. Most of the people I'm seeing driving in there are the people in that residential neighborhood. Per our data, what we got and measuring for over a week, our average daily trips are about 1,100 vehicles. There's about 230 homes in this neighborhood. If each home has two cars, they're taking one trip a day. That's 1,000 trips. So you probably got close to 1,000 people in this neighborhood taking, using most of these trips. So we're not seeing, in theory, a huge number of cut-through traffics, if there are some. And so that was something I did express at that latest meeting. One other thing I'll bring up, at that meeting, both meetings, we talked about, the HOA did ask about, can we install electronic speed signs, or could we qualify for it? As we've mentioned, the street itself didn't qualify for traffic calming, so staff won't recommend spending city funds on a traffic calming sign, or the electronic feedback sign. We did offer the HOA, if they would like to purchase one, they can, and they can use our city light poles to do so with an encroachment permit that is on, and they just have to maintain that portion of the sign if for some reason the pole gets hit and damaged. And so there was some talk from the board members of how much an assessment would be of $40 or $50 per household to fund their own sign. And I don't know the outcome of that, obviously, because that would take their board hearing and a huge change for them. But that was something that was talked about quite a bit, too.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you. Anyone else, other questions?
Did the sheriff go out to the, did he write the tickets?
We have not sent the sheriff out to this particular area. If we can, as, if that's one of the recommendations to increase activity in the area, that's often what we'll do if we do a traffic calming measure. If you did watch last night's Cuyahoga Frontera in the coast, since Frontera qualified, we notified the police of the results of that study. They increased their activity, and they did cite a lot of people on Cuyahoga Frontera. This street not being qualified, we haven't pushed that direction out there yet. If it's something you guys would like us to do, we can always pass that message on.
What about smaller dots, like you see in the crosswalks, instead of the big rubber things? What about the small, like, reflectors? What about like the little lights that we have on El Camino at a couple crosswalks to slow?
Ultimately, I would like to see that come as an HOA request, because you're now putting dots and rumble, noise issues in front of somebody's house that are going to get 1,100 vehicles a day traveling over and making a noise issue. So on Frontera, the city put in some bot dots and lower dots. Ultimately, ended up removing them due to noise complaints. And so we don't, and nowadays, too, with the bike traffic that we're getting, especially that increased speed of bike traffic, I'm a little weary of putting some of those in the middle of a path of travel.
Anything else? Karen? Refresh my memory, their score was 45, 46? Does that sound right?
I'm looking at a score of 40 on that one.
Forty, and it takes 50 to qualify.
And it takes 51 to qualify.
51, okay. Is there anything else? My generic question that I'd written was, how did the meeting go? You've kind of partially, this most recent meeting with the HOA, several members, and you've talked about several things you discussed, was there anything else kind of came out of that meeting?
Just the overall talk of, you know, obviously, some people in the community are going to want a one-way street, or can it be a cul-de-sac? And we talked about, you know, why staff wouldn't recommend some of those things. And ultimately, we also talked about even the potential for the HOA taking ownership of the road. Because ultimately, if they are talking about making a one-way street or a gated community, they'd have to take ownership of the road, and they'd be responsible financially for spending the hundreds, if not up into the six, seven-digit cost to put in a cul-de-sac. The right-of-way on that street is only 52 feet wide that we own. Physically, can't put a cul-de-sac in that distance. And so, one-way streets, we're simply not just going to put bollards up at one end and hope nobody crashes into them. To do it, to do it right, is to put a curb, close it down, do it with a real turnaround properly, and not just put up bollards that people will drive through, or even delineators that people just drive over over time. It's just not something staff will recommend.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. Everyone else good? Okay, with that, we would love to hear from the public. I see we have speaker cards. You'll have three minutes of time each. The, pay attention to the lights. When it goes yellow, I think you have like 30 seconds remaining, or you might want to set a little stopwatch if you're worried about going over in your time, because we will stop you at three minutes. Our first speaker will be Adeline Britton, followed by Chloe Britton. If you'd prefer to reverse the order, so Mom goes first, whatever's best.
Okay, I'll go first. Okay. Good evening.
And I'm sorry, you are, which, are you?
Chloe.
Chloe, okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I informed the neighborhood about Zach's plan to increase red curbs for line-of-sight issues and added signage to slow vehicles down. In response, I received a plethora of emails and disbelief that that would be the answer for slowing vehicles down. You may have received these, and if not, I have printed them here if you guys want to take a look at them. In response to his plan, we would appreciate the added red curb to assist in the line-of-sight issue for these residents. However, with added red curbs, this will decrease the amount of space for parking for the neighborhood. With that being said, in agreeance with the red curb, we would like to propose city permit parking for new Providence residents only on Camino Faro. This would decrease the amount of people parking on Camino Faro from Highland Light and from the apartments on Frontera. As far as adding signs to Faro, as Zach said, the analysis that was done to decipher the need for traffic calming measures is not really an accurate way to test because of the uniqueness of Camino Faro. With neighborhood streets, every few feet, cars will slow down the average due to turning in and out of their streets. With that being said, being so close to the number of 51 and having 82% of the residents in agreeance that there should be more than just a sign posted to slow traffic down, when in the traffic calming category, the city would then be responsible for purchasing a sign that flashes "slow down" while saying "a car's speed." This would be much more effective than just a regular sign. Personally, I do not believe that this is the answer. However, it may be a small step in the right direction. I understand the city believes that Camino Faro is too steep for speed pumps, but this neighborhood needs to slow the cars down. Therefore, I propose making Camino Faro a one-way street. I understand this would widen the road, however, using that space and adding a bike lane on one side would then narrow the road, leading to slower speeds going up the hill. This would not only make it safer for pedestrians to cross the road, cars to turn out of their streets, but it would also minimize the cars cutting through to Cali Frontera from Hermosa. I understand we cannot have it all, and there are budgets, but I do believe this would be the most cost-effective option with the most impact. Thank you for your time. I don't know if you guys want to see the emails.
Thank you. Are those, the emails that she's referring to? We got emailed today with like seven emails?
Yeah, we got them.
No, this is like 25 to 30 emails.
We had one yesterday to shut down.
Okay.
They're the ones that you forwarded, Zach?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We did print out some additional copies of every email, but there were, I believe, three essential packets that were emailed to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Adeline. I have a lot of friends in my neighborhood. I hope you won't wait until one of us gets hurt before you make a change. Please keep my friends, family, and I safe by slowing the cars down on Camino Faro. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next is Jake Britton, followed by Nancy Stoll, who will be followed by Kalen Wade.
I'm going to lift it up here for a second.
We won't count this against your time.
All right. Good evening, everyone. That's my daughter and my wife. Want to start by taking the time to address some of the things that Zach brought up regarding the engineering of the street, and I just have some questions. We're talking about the grade of the street and the worry of speed humps. I just was curious, how many speed hump accidents do you guys have on record to date?
I'm sorry, just so you know, this is not like a Q and A thing.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
We're not going to answer questions, neither will staff.
Okay. So there's 400 kids that are killed by cars annually. That's one a day. We don't know how many accidents have been caused by speed humps, do we? So we're worried about 11% grade in speed humps, and we're saying no to the speed bumps, and we're talking about signage. Sir, Mr. Cosgrove, you drove the street. What was the residential speed limit posted for our street on Camino Faro? Did you read the sign? Did you read the sign? Where was the sign posted?
I saw it on the right-hand side, about, I don't know, a block down.
Okay. Do you think that if you weren't on the planning commission and driving that street as an investigative priority, do you think you would know what the speed limit is on that street? Do you think you would follow it? Okay, I can assure you it doesn't. People don't. People speed down now because it's a hill. Cali Frontera is already for traffic calming measures. And guess what? Frontera and Hermosa, besides the light right there that is inundated with traffic, there's a street that ties them. It's Camino Faro with the residential neighborhood encompassed around it. There are kids in this street, the street's getting younger, it's progressing, and there's a school a half a block down the way. Ask yourself, the HOA can pay for it, right, sir? We want the HOA to pay for it, not the city. Who's got the deeper pockets when a kid gets hit by a car and gets killed? I don't need to tell you what I do, you can probably already assume what I do for a living, but I've been on these calls. I've resuscitated these kids and I failed to bring them back to life. It's ugly. And if you guys are going to be the ones that go tell the parents that you were informed that you could have done something and you didn't, I hope you're there for that. Because it's not a good conversation to tell the parent that their kid is dead because they got hit by a car. That's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about speculative manners of who's responsible for the sign or the cost of the sign. We're talking about making a neighborhood safer right down the street from a school, attached to two major arterial roads that are already under investigation for speed control. It's already been brought to your attention that it's a hazard. So you can put on the HOA, the HOA can put it back on you, but in the meantime, the residents pay the price for it. And ultimately, a kid gets killed by a car every day. So it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So this finger pointing that we're doing, when it comes time, who do you think they're going to come for? Now that you guys have the information, now that you guys have been informed, all the residents know that the city knows this is a problem. Do the right thing for the right reasons for the people that live there.
Thank you, Jake. Nancy Stole, followed by Kalen Wade.
I won't lower this, so I'll just speak up. Hi, my name is Nancy Stole. Thank you for hearing me. I live on Camino Ancla, which is the street just before Frontera. So that's the absolute, they are flying by the time they hit my street. So to be able not be hit by a car, to walk my dog, we go two blocks up. And I try to cross over because that is where the dog receptacle is and to get the bags. So as we cross, I mean, I look both ways, we're careful, and the next thing you know, someone flies around that corner and I don't know how many times I'm looking at the headlights right at my face. And they're like, just get out of the way, and I'm not happy about that, you know? I shouldn't have to be so afraid to walk in our neighborhood. So there have been many accidents and many other things, people hitting poles and, you know, on because they are. I do believe it is a thoroughfare than instead of going around all the way Hermosa to Frontera to get through, cut through to the coast. So I believe it is a hazard. We need to calm it down. I mean, I have flagged people down to slow down and of course, you know, give me the finger or whatever, but I want to do something to slow that down because, yes, I'm afraid either it's a child, adult, it could be an older person, or someone like me who's middle-aged and just walking their dog and gets hit by a car. So anyways, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Kalen Wade, followed by Brian Baldusi.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. I live on Camino Ancla as well. I live right on the corner of Camino Ancla and Camino Faro. We've lived there for twenty-three years and since the advent of the bridge and the off-ramp there, the traffic has increased significantly on our street over the years. The amount of honks and skidding traffic that we get either at the side of our house, on Faro or Frontera, because the cars pulling out are honking or slumming on their brakes, has increased tremendously. I work part-time, so I'm home most afternoons between one and the rest of the evening and if that, if there, not one, there's two or three every afternoon that I'm hearing either car, the tires screeching or the horns honking. And we've had our car hit on Camino Faro before at night and it was my son's brand-new car. Unfortunately, he made his first payment and it got totaled. And then we've also had our car stolen just recently in the past month. We've had our car stolen off that street. So I'm agreeing with Chloe. I like the idea of the one-way. It sounds like the speed humps are not viable. However, I do think a speed hump prior to getting to Camino Ancla, going down the hill, would help because the length of our house is not very long, but those cars are flying to that stop sign. They really are going fast. And like Nancy said, she has to walk up the street because crossing there is very dangerous. I have sixteen-year-old daughter starting to drive and I don't even want her walking across the street to our car out there. So a one-way street would be great. And that's my two cents. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Kalen. Brian Baldusi, followed by Bert Sandin.
I appreciate what Zach has done and I get his points and I think they're probably well-founded. I've lived in this neighborhood since nineteen ninety and we have seen reductions in speeds and stuff like that, but there are still problems. You're seeing the increase in the city of the kids on e-bikes and all that sort of thing. So they're zipping down the street, too. There's a lot of issues on the street. The sightline thing, I think, is a great fix, but those houses are small and people have stuff in their garages, so there's no place for their cars. And there's usually three cars per household, so all of our neighbors park on that street. The apartments are overloaded, how many people they pack in those apartments, they're parking on our street. Highland Light, they can't park on their streets, we can't park on our streets. We have to park on a public street that's on Faro. So if you reduce, I mean, increase the red curbs, we have less parking for ourselves. So I'm not so inclined to want a one-way street. I don't know if that's really going to be effective. I think I want to talk to the HOA myself about some of these flashing lights. I think that's a reasonable expectation of what maybe we can do on our part, even though it is a city street, not an HOA street. But I think if we're going to do the sightline issue, I really would respectfully request that we somehow make that a permit parking only for our residents so we can keep the other folks out on the Frontera and other places to park. So that's my thing.
Thank you, Brian. Bert Sandin, followed by Kevin Thomas.
Good evening. Let's see, I was one of the board members that met with staff on site and I guess we acknowledge that what we would like, we're not going to necessarily be able to get, which would be the speed bumps because of a liability issue. But one of the suggestions he came up with besides the line of sight, which is absolutely necessary, but that doesn't necessarily, necessarily slow people down, it just makes it safer for the people turning out. He had mentioned the sign of slowing to fifteen in a curb, which would be great. I was really hopeful that maybe the police department could show up there once a month and write tickets like Mad Men. So all the neighbors would get the idea they have to go slow, they'll probably run the board out of town after everybody gets the tickets, but it would, once they start complaining to each neighbor that, boy, you know, I can't afford these tickets, that might help slow people down. Beyond that, because that looks like a first-phase kind of an idea, I don't know if that'll be enough to slow it down. I'd like to, in your minds, keep kind of a back door open so that if this doesn't work, we can revisit this issue and try and come up with some other ideas. One possible idea that had not come up the other day that one of the neighbors suggested to us, he said, you know, there's some of those communities where they have like a striped hash, almost like a crosswalk across the street on their speed bumps, and they had seen situations where they did just the stripes but didn't have a speed bump, and it made people think there was a speed bump and it might slow folks down. I don't know if that's an issue or not. When I asked him about whether or not the flashing signs, is there, are there any studies that really create a body of evidence that they actually were, staff mentioned that actually there are those things and people do get the idea to slow down. And we as a board, if the city can't afford it, we may look at that ourselves. Aside from that, just please keep this in your mind that we're trying to stay safe and we need your guys' permission and help. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. Kevin Thomas.
I'm going to pass it this time.
Okay, thank you. That's the last speaker card I have. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, thank you. We all understand this is a very passionate issue, by the way. I have a couple of questions, follow-on questions. There was, I heard a couple requests for permit parking to try and thin the parking out there. Is that, is that an option available to residents? They just have to approach you guys with an application or something?
There is an application for it. We don't get too many. We only have a couple in the entire city. I can get with the HOA. It would be something that I'd want the HOA to formally adopt and approach the city with. I'd like to do the line of sight study first to see how much it's truly affecting the area. So those things could potentially go hand in hand if that's the direction we want to go. They can always approach the city and ask. It's a matter of staff resources of how soon we can get to those types of things. With a permit parking system like that, we would be notifying the surrounding neighborhoods and HOAs. This is a public street, so they have a right to comment on that, too. And so that is, that would be something, there is a process to it, it's just not something we do very often. So I'd need to do a little bit of research on it to find out, you know, what it fully entails, but there definitely is a permit process for it. I believe it goes all the way up through planning commission and city council.
But they have your contact information, the HOA does. They know how to reach out to you if they're interested in formally doing that.
We did have a brief conversation about that in the field and it's something I would like to see their, their HOA do, be the formal applicant of, as a formal adopted thing that they're asking for. Because that is a pretty big step and I'd rather not divide a community on it, too, though. One of the issues I brought up with the HOA, if they do do that, we're probably going to ask that question of can they open up their streets at nighttime parking also, though? And so if there are, it is a crowded neighborhood where their driver approaches are very close to each other, but there are cars parked there during the day, we would probably ask that question of why can't they park at night? And so with, they are going to ask for, due to the loss of parking on Faro, why can't the HOA also increase their own parking on their private streets?
Okay, yeah. So did that, that was my next question. I mean, did that come up at all in your discussions? Is the HOA going to consider allowing parking on their own streets?
I think the way we put it is let's do the line of sight study, come back to the planning commission with that red curbing recommendation, will likely be early February. Then we'll know how much it is. We can do some preliminary talks with the HOA or a primary petitioner or something from the community about what the process is for it. And so we can get, we can get a head start on that community permit, you know, that private parking issue. We definitely do need to look at that line of sight study. We have enough comments on that now that, you know, now that it's come to our attention, we, it's something staff is really going to look at. We, we're going to, we have staff already teed up, ready to go out there and do it. We kind of wanted to see what was happening tonight, too, though.
Okay, thanks. And just so everybody knows, we fully understand that increasing the line of sight at the intersections is not going to slow traffic down on Faro, but it will make it safer for cars to exit those side streets onto Faro, which a number of the emails have mentioned is a significant problem. Anyone else have other questions or discussion items?
Other question? What is the parking during the daytime in the residential area? They can't park at all or is it just between two and five in the morning?
My understanding is they, they are allowed to park during the daytime. I don't know the hours, though. You do or one of the HOA members probably knows.
So they can park on their own street during the day, but there's some restriction over two, five or some kind of...
No overnight parking is what I understand.
I'm sorry, the time for public comment is over. Thank you.
I have a question. I wanted to know, how is the, who administers the permit process or who manages it as far as violations?
If it does turn into a, that's the city enforcement. And so that is something that, when we do that, you are looking at additional resources and yet another thing that the police are now having to monitor or, or the police reserve volunteers that are able to legally cite city enforcement. It can't be the HOA people with it, it can't be that. So, yeah, you are looking at towing and ticketing and those types of features. I'm sure, we have so few of them, I'm certain it starts with ticketing and by that time you probably don't get too many repeat offenders.
I got a question for Zach. Zach, what are your thoughts on the radar trailer, maybe for a week, on the, on the street?
That is something that we can do also. I mean, we only have so many of it with them. So when we do get complaints, we often like to, to put that trailer out there as one of our first steps.
I think it could be a good experiment to see if people are reminded, oh, you're going thirty-five and it's a twenty-five and it's flashing that type of sign, if people see an improvement.
We can definitely ask the trailer get put out there.
Okay. Because if they see an improvement, then that would lean towards making that a permanent sign on one of the poles out there, whether the city funds that are HOA, that's another conversation, but at least we could have some evidence that would suggest that it would be helpful. So could you, if you, if you agree, I'm going to maybe, as when we wrap up, that'll be one of the suggestions hopefully we can make. The other suggestion was the, that striping on the street, I think it was the HOA guy that mentioned that.
Looked like a speed bump, but it wasn't.
Pretends it's a speed bump, but it's not. What are your thoughts on that?
It's an interesting one because it doesn't sound like it's textured, it's just paint.
Yes. So there'll be no thump, thump, thump.
If it's not textured and it's just paint, I have a feeling it's going to feel like a crosswalk where you have a false sense of security of people crossing the street. And so I, we don't have it, I can't think of it anywhere else on a public street. And so it'd be very unique to do.
Okay.
I, I'm a little weary of being the first to do something and I don't see it in a lot of other communities either, though.
Not to mention that, you know, the second time through, people are going to know there's not a speed bump there.
True, especially if it's repeat people cutting through and similar to the single speed bump idea. Once you've driven it once, you know that there's nothing else after that. At least with radar signs and even temporary signs, a lot of people have that perception that there's a police officer watching that sign and ready to go. But if we do increase the presence of the temporary trailer, I'd like it not be set at a certain timeframe, it's just that we increase the frequency of putting it out.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to suggest anything other than I think we should try it.
Yeah.
The other thing is, how would you, one of the feelings I get tonight is concern that the city is just trying to cover its own liabilities and that's really not the case. You know, we're neighbors, too. We live here, too. We're trying to figure this out with you. Each neighborhood's unique. There's no magic answer. If there was, we wouldn't need to have these meetings, we could just do number two. So it's going to be, one of the things I wanted to ask you, Zach, is I want to make sure that the community members that are experiencing this don't feel that it's over after tonight. You know, typically, and we get into situations like this, in my experience, a phased approach sometimes gives people like, okay, we're going to try this to start and we're going to review it. If it doesn't work, we're going to do the next step and then the next step until we feel like we've got to where we want to be. So what I would, are you okay if we come up tonight with a, a series of phases that we could, you know, maybe, let's try these things to start and let's come back and see how they do? And if they don't, can we come back and implement, keep going? So people don't feel like it's over after tonight.
Commissioners, if I, if I may, this, this was agendized as a, as a receive and file and an update, so it wasn't agendized for the, the commission to be making any actions or any policy decisions. So just for, for agendized purposes, this isn't, there wasn't a commission action agendized this evening.
So that means we can't make suggestions?
You could certainly make suggestions to staff, but there, there isn't any formal action that will be taken.
Sure. Yeah. Sure, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that that's what we're going to do tonight, is make some suggestions. And that, you know, perhaps this idea of, let's do a phase one that includes, you know, the radar trailer, the, the signage that you're recommending, the line of sight study. And I would also like to suggest, maybe to the HOA gentleman that's here, think about a committee, a, a safe traffic in our neighborhood committee. Of volunteers that live there that can periodically post notes on people's homes and put the leaflets out, that we have this committee, this is our concern, this is our charge, this is what we're going to be doing. And update the community and make it such that the awareness level goes up so that the way you all feel tonight, everyone in your community would be feeling as well. So I would, I would, having come from other communities, we've, where that, that was something we did and it was very effective. And we had an acronym or something about, you know, again, unsafe traffic in our neighborhood or something to that degree. And we did periodic leaflets that defined it, excessive speeds, that kind of thing, to just constantly remind our neighbors that we're all living here together, we need to be responsible drivers. So, that would be like, right out of the gate, a suggestion, right? And then, maybe we could come back and with an agendized item where we could actually take an action and we could look at the speed signs based on how we did with the trailer, we could look at other notions that, you know, come forward, maybe from this committee. And then we could just keep going until we get this dialed in.
And if I can add to that, maybe it helps. What I've often told communities is, even though you may not qualify now, we, you can always petition for us again. I, I obviously don't have staffing to constantly be looking at the same community over and over again every month, but, you know, we often look at things in a season and say, maybe next season, when we do this, you'll, maybe it does qualify. And similar to last night, if you did watch it, we go through our manual and we're going through those steps. And that's what we're educating the community about. A lot of times it is increased police presence, putting the signs out. So all these are actually listed in our manual and, and it kind of escalates to that point where that end result is speed cushions type of thing. And so, on Frontera, that's why it ended up with electronic speed signs instead of speed bumps. And that's what ended up getting approved on that street that qualified. If that doesn't work, they can come to us again and say, six months, a year, and say, hey, this isn't working, can you come back out and reconsider that next step? And that's no different from people who qualify or the streets that don't. We're always wanting to come back out there and, you know, do what we can, staff time permitting, obviously, because we do get a lot of requests. Just yesterday, another one came in, you know? So every week is another kind of group of, you know, citizens. And this isn't unique to any particular area. Most residents feel people are speeding. And it's just, it's, it's an issue we're dealing with on a daily basis.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to put out the notion that some problems require iteration, right? And so, I wanted to let the community members that are here tonight know, we're willing to iterate with you until this gets to the point where you feel it's, it's improved enough. And we're in us with you. This is not something that we're just trying to move off our plate. So, we just need to work through the process. And maybe you can look at the, you know, after you do these things, maybe include looking at the, you know, selective enforcement, see how that works. Try it, you know, ask them to try it for a week, see how that works. And it would be nice if they did have that committee because then that committee could get some of those results and put it out to the community. Hey, this is what we found out. You know, that type of thing. That continual feedback loop is enormously effective. It's very positive, it's very powerful, so.
That's it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any questions or comments?
We're in discussion, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I totally understand the frustration and the fear this problem generates, but we're here kind of analyzing what staff has summarized for us. The experts came up with the manuals they're basing their decisions on. And from what our traffic engineer is saying, the speed bumps potentially could cause more danger than we currently have. And that's not a risk I want to take being, I got to trust the experts on that. We're not going to go against, or at least I'm not going to go against that. But I certainly support the, Zach, if you are considering, and I think it has, would have to go to council to get some additional policing on the street. Is that the process?
Technically, no. And if you were asking for a reoccurring schedule or something like that, that would be something. But if, we often will get complaints, especially on those streets that do qualify, though, we will then say, you know, to the sergeant, say, please, can you increase your presence on the street for a little while? And we tell them where on the block we're seeing the highest peaks, because our speed survey is looking at different areas and we'll give them those results even. And so, Frontera was a great example where they went out and cited a number of people.
Because I feel that might be better than just counting the cars and whatnot, what they find out and see and can tick it. And that will certainly, I think, be in the minds of your co-residents in the neighborhood that, hey, we're all in this together, let's get the speed down. But I'm assuming we direct staff to implement the phases that they're showing now, but I'd also like to encourage getting additional policing on the street if we can get it.
And I think we could make that recommendation without technically a, a finding or an action. So we've, point taken. It's due to the number of complaints, we, we've, we've asked for that just on a complaint basis, too. If we just start seeing a wave of complaints, without a formal study, we can ask the police to increase their presence. As long as it's not set in a, hey, we want you out there every Monday, that's where it starts getting troublesome, because they have duties that they need to spread out over time and, and so.
And I guess what I hear is on other items that they request, the best process for them to make a formal request on that particular solution and have it evaluated, is that correct?
Correct. And some of the bigger ones we talked about, the red curbing will be coming back to a hearing, so the HOA and the residents will be notified of that red curbing. So we'll, we'll be here in, you know, two months talking about red curb in this area and how many stalls, and how many street parking stalls are being removed. And so that'll be kind of that next phase for this community.
So Zach, can you go back over the radar trailer? So that is definitely an option, since we're in discussion. I'm really in favor of that.
The temporary trailer, yes. As long as it's not on a set schedule or it has to be there every week and we guarantee it.
Does it go a, a week at a time, just one week? Or is it there for 20 days?
We usually put it out there for a few days, depending on what kind of week it is. So that, we're, we're moving it around a lot because it's, it's in high demand. And so, we'll often move it around quite a bit. And those RSVPs, I believe I've heard their numbers are a little down, so it's, it's encouraging to, if anybody knows any volunteers, to volunteer for the police service RSVP. The, those, their services are helpful in setting that up and getting it out there. So it's based on their availability, too.
Along with the increased sheriff activity? As long as the HOA knows that that's going to happen, because you're going to have some unhappy residents and parents that have 16-year-olds that pay insurance, you know, you all need to know about that. I appreciate you coming out tonight, takes, to take your time to do this, we all appreciate it. It helps us understand the situation. A parent of four kids, they're all grown, but I remember trying to get them to learn how to drive and the fear of, you know, just, just coming back to your own house when, when you have such a busy street. I think we all understand that, that feeling. Again, like we all said here, this is not the end, we're going to try to work with you to make sure that, you know, there is some resolve to this. And it might just be step by step by step. So, okay.
Okay. No other comments or discussion? Go ahead.
The electronic, you know, speed signs were put up in Tolega. Did the Tolega HOA pay for those?
Kaie Saluda, or, oh, excuse me, this is the...
Las Frases or?
La, La Pedriza, right.
Also Frases off of Saluda has...
There is one set that the city put out here, we brought to Planning Commission early last year on Pedriza, I believe, where city paid. I don't, the other street, if it's a private street, it would have been the HOA. I'm only recall, I'm only recalling the Pedriza ones. That was a city-approved project that went through added bike lanes. And during that process, we, on the dais, actually added some electronic speed signs. And we were able to find it within that project budget to include that. And so that was something that was due to the bike lanes, due to the complaints that came up during that hearing process. Because a lot of people, if you remember, came in and asked, narrowing the lanes, that won't solve anything, that won't solve anything. If, I've driven the street afterwards, it feels a lot better with that bike lane and that buffer lane in there and the electronic speed signs on it. But that was city-funded because it was approved with that project, as you recommended, yeah.
My only other suggestion would be that it is going to be a continuing, you know, item and I think right now the sheriff and the speed trailer. But I also think you should be talking to your council members because they're really the power of the purse. And if we're talking about, you know, a construction project one way or ending a street with bollards, you know, that's going to be a discussion between the council and the HOA as to how, who pays. So the squeaky wheel gets the grease, I would also start talking to the council. Because while we are quasi-judicial, we're 75% administrative, meaning following the code, but not the power of the purse. So I'd move to receive and file with the suggestions that are mentioned, which are speed trailer, Orange County Sheriff Enforcement, and was there another one?
All the staff, all the staff actions that...
Right. Second. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, public hearings, 8A, conditional use permit 22-071 and minor conditional use permit 22-420, Flights and Irons Full Alcohol Expansion and Shared Parking, 372 to 378 Camino de Estrella. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. John Champa, Contract Senior Planner, will be providing a staff report and we do have a PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, Chair McCann, Planning Commissioners, John Champa. I'm the case planner for the Flights and Irons request before you this evening. Just to give a little background on its location, it's located on Community de Estrella at the intersection of Miracosta. The site is comprised of three buildings under one ownership and approximately 13,000 square feet. Is located within the Community Commercial Two Zone and is a multi-tenant site, improved with 56 parking spaces. Just to give a little background, Flights and Irons is a fine dining restaurant, has been in operation for four years and it has a type 41 license for, for beer and wine. The suite that it's proposing to go into was previously occupied by CB Cycle, which has been vacant since 2019. The center is comprised of a mix of uses, including a professional and medical office, pet grooming, restaurant and hair salon. So the request before you today is for a conditional use permit to allow for the full service of alcohol for indoor and onsite consumption at the restaurant with the specified hours and as well as a shared parking to address the non-conforming parking condition of the site. It should be noted that if the applicant were to, in the future, propose any outdoor seating, that would be considered a substantial modification to the application, would require a, an amendment to the conditional use permit. So here we have the existing suite, as well as the adjacent two suites that the, the space would be expanding into, which is suites 372 through 374 immediately adjacent to the site, or to the, to the suite. Here we have a blow-up version of the proposed expansion area, which includes storage freezer area and additional seating for the restaurant as well as bathrooms. The expanded area would result in 38 additional seats and the existing seating is 44 seats. And so, this, this in total with the expansion result in the suite being 4,207 square feet in total size. So, staff's completed a breakdown of the parking for the entire center, as well as identification of the hours of operation for the different businesses. And as you can see here, the, with the total parking spaces provided onsite, we have 56. However, based on just a straight application of the parking regulations, would result in 76 parking stalls. However, not all of the uses do operate at the same time. And in the parking survey that was conducted the last week of November, the site ident, was conducted Monday, Wednesday, Friday and Saturday from the hours of 12:00 in the afternoon to 7:00 PM. And the maximum parking occupancy that was identified was 39% or 22 stalls. So the proposed operations and conditions associated with the business would be limiting the proposed expanded area during normal, normal business hours, which would be eight to five. So restricting that seating in that area, as well as to ensure consistency with other typical restaurant uses for full alcohol service. In this application, there would be no live entertainment, as well as amplified music. The application has been reviewed by the city's Code Enforcement Division, as well as the Sheriff's Department, ABC, and all are in support of the application, have not had any issues with the business owner. Staff is proposing one modified condition for consistency, and that would be modifying condition 1.7B to restrict the use of the expanded area during the business hours as I, as I previously identified. So basically, there would be no allowed seating in the expanded restaurant area during normal business hours, and that would be consistent with the condition 7.9 provided. So in conclusion, with, with the application of the, the shared parking agreement, the project is in conformance with all the applicable development standards, as well as conditions of approval applied to ensure consistency with the general plan, as well as the design guidelines. Staff is recommending approval of the application and that it is exempt due to its existing facility and is recommending approval subject to the attached resolution conditions of approval. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant business owner are available for any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to point out that the, the applicant is here available for questions. So do we have any questions? Go ahead.
In the existing restaurant, is there going to be any remodeling? An, an expanded portion?
None, none that I'm aware of in the plans and I think that the owner can, is confirming. Thank you.
What kind, oh, and the other one would be, what kind of lunchtime do they, I know that one modification kind of satisfies me a little bit, but what kind of lunchtime business do they have?
From my conversations with the owner, it's been, it is very light. I've been there on, on one or two occasions during the lunchtime and it was really, it is really light. I can let him speak to that a little bit, but his primary focus is in the evening hours, that's where their prime generation is. And given that it is a fine dining restaurant, most of the usage of the restaurant during that time period is prepping for in the evenings. And so if he does have staff there, it makes most sense to, you know, service a couple of customers while they are doing that. So that's the intent of the business owner. And he was okay closing off the proposed expanded area, which could easily be done because of the doorways there. So he is, he is accepting of that condition.
Thank you. Karen, do you have?
Can you refresh my memory, what's around that area as far as residential? Doesn't, it doesn't seem like there is, but can you?
No, only across the street, which is a city data point.
That's what it is. Okay, thank you.
Bert?
Just a quick clarification. Could you clarify how...
Could you clarify how, if they came in with a application for the sixteen outdoor seats, how you would handle that?
So yeah, the, the project is subject to modifications, whether they're considered in substantial compliance or not. And that's subject to the city planner's determination. So proposed expansion of that, given that there is an existing conditional use permit, there's a shared parking agreement, that would be something that would not be considered in substantial compliance and would require necessary an amendment to the existing permit. So that's something that would be applicable here.
The sixteen is if you've got a restaurant, you can apply by right to have sixteen outdoor seatings without providing any additional parking.
Okay.
But in this case, they're already short and they'd be shorter if they had to take up some parking spaces. And it would basically exceed the threshold that. There is, so it wouldn't happen.
Here's a check in. At the, the subject says that for alcohol expansion and off-site parking agreement. Am I reading that? I mean.
Where, where are you seeing the?
Right on page one, at, right at the top.
Yeah, so that, that is, yeah, it should, it should not be that. It should be for shared parking.
Okay.
So that is a typo.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what I thought. Can you just, okay, can you just go over again? There are fifty-six spots onsite, total required seventy-six. How did, total required for this use or for the whole center?
For the entire center.
And all the uses?
All of the uses and that we're assessing it at one time.
Okay. For, what are we, what is the occupancy being expanded to?
So the, the proposed total seating is seventy, seventy-seven seats. Is there's forty-four existing, oh, I'm sorry. Eighty-one total seat, seating. As far as the building occupancy, I'm not exactly sure on.
Seating is what I was looking for. That's a better way of putting it.
Yeah.
So you're saying, what is it now?
It is forty-four.
And it's going, it's going to eighty-one?
Correct.
Okay.
One point to note is that when you exceed three thousand square feet for a restaurant, the parking assessment gets modified from one space per four seats to one space per one hundred and twenty square feet of the entire restaurant square footage.
The whole scheme changes?
The whole scheme changes. So existing right now, they require eleven spaces. And now with the expansion, it jumps to thirty-five spaces.
And there's, and there's fifty-six onsite?
Correct.
Okay. So the whole idea is that their additional parking requirement would be met because it's going to occur after five PM when all the other businesses are essentially closed?
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, that seems pretty basic and straightforward. I did go onsite. I did validate all those parking spots and there are, interestingly, sixteen spots underneath the building. I talked to the manager there who was quite helpful and he indicated that the staff either parks underground in those spaces or offsite and they won't take those thirty, fifty-six spots up. And that the other, yeah, so it's, it seemed, and I asked him too about the lunch and he told me it's minimal and that their business really is dinner. So, and I was there a little after lunch hour, but kind of in the window and I think I counted four people. So, and it was easy to park and park there and so forth. So, yeah, I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, actually, I was there as well and, and even when the businesses are open, there's plenty of parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. I have a speaker card from Victor Sandoval. If you're interested in speaking, you can. You have three minutes.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much. Thank you for, for having me and, you know, trying to help me. John has been, you know, insanely helpful and walking me through a lot of things and making me understand a lot of the problems and a lot of the issues that we concern. I've been, like he mentioned, I've been in business for four years, a little over four years at that location. And if you guys were at the restaurant, you can see that I can see the parking lot every single day when I'm there. So, you know, so I didn't really perceive any problems with the parking. My business in reality is all evening business and most of my neighbors, you know, leave by five o'clock, six o'clock the latest. So the entire space belongs, you know, to us. Our neighbors, pretty much the customers that come to us as the neighbors, they, I want to say the majority of them walk to the restaurant because they live so close. So we have a neighborhood right to the, you know, to the left and, and obviously across the street on Camino de Estrella, we have the Dana Point, Capo Beach area, which a lot of the people work and walk. I mean, I'm really here to answer any questions you might have within, you know, within the space. And, you know, hopefully we can, we can move, move forward with this.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for Commissioner Discussion.
I have.
In support of the staff recommendations.
I as well.
I'll make a motion to determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section fifteen three oh one and adopt Resolution PC twenty-two zero three five approving conditional use permit twenty-two zero seven one and minor conditional use permit twenty-two four twenty. Flights and Irons Full Alcohol and Shared Parking Agreement, subject to attached conditions of approval.
And is that as modified by, in the presentation?
Seven point nine?
Yeah, that one point seven B or whatever, per your.
Yeah.
Presentation. That's your motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, congratulations.
Good luck.
Yep, I think it's a good, good thing for the plaza there.
Yes, I think, I think it's going to be an amazing, an amazing, you know, finish the whole concept for that area.
Yeah.
Especially right at the end of San Clemente, right?
It is.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for being a San Clemente.
Thank you.
Not leaking over into Dana. But you can suck their tax dollars out of them.
I'm trying, I'm trying to bring, you know, to bring it this way. It's like, you know, right on the border, so, you know, want to bring, make sure that we bring, you know, San Clemente. When I first moved to Orange County, I moved to San Clemente, South San Clemente. So I lived there for four years. Then, you know, my wife and I, since we bought the restaurant, we, we bought a place in La Grane Gal. But, you know, I have a special place for San Clemente. So I was really thrilled to be able to open a business, you know, here. And to succeed and survive, you know, COVID and everything else with, you know, the help of the city has been great. So now with the expansion, it just kind of finishes the idea and the, and the dynamic that we, you know, that we started with. And we are restaurant first and a, and a bar second. You know, we're a culinary dream concept, so we, we're a scratch kitchen. We make everything in-house. So that's why we're there doing the day. And yeah, you know, might as well be open to, you know, to help, you know, alleviate the, the payroll to be able to keep educating our staff.
Great, thank you so much, Victor. We wish you great success.
Thank you so much.
Next item, eight B zoning amendment twenty-two dash three sixty-six, zoning permit streamlining.
Thank you, Chair McCann, Adam Otamian, Deputy Community Development Director and City Planner. This item is being requested to be tabled in order to provide staff additional time needed to review issues and finish preparing materials before this planning commission considers it. We would request that the item be tabled at this time. Staff will renotice this project for the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Since this was noticed as a public hearing, we do want to make an announcement that if there are people here to speak on the item, that they should have an opportunity to do so. I don't see anybody here. I just would like that in the record.
Do we want to table or just continue? Because if we table it, then we have to make a motion and take it off the table, don't we?
We can, yeah, we could continue it to the, if we have a date certain that.
Yeah, he said the eighteenth.
Then we wouldn't have to renotice it, would we?
Staff is already in the process of renoticing it and we, we would feel more comfortable renoticing it.
But I think, yeah, we could certainly continue it to a date.
Continue with renotice.
And then, you know, to the extent that the city wants to provide additional notice, more notices, nothing wrong with that, so.
I just want to make a comment about this for the staff, if that's all right. Can I make a comment?
Absolutely, sure.
Yeah. Since we did have some conversation about this a while back, one of the things that I felt would be helpful when we, when you guys come forward would be some analysis as to the problem and root causes. So in other words, I think the, when we visited last time, it was, the problem was it takes too long. But that's a really broad problem statement and it would be helpful if we had either that refined and or root cause to what's taking so long. This takes the longest and these are the reasons why. So that when we look at streamlined solutions, we can marry them up to those root causes and say, yeah, that's going to fix that. Versus what I want to, the feeling I had last time is just a bunch of random brainstorming ideas. Some may, you know, and some might just be great to just do because they were good ideas. But I think we should try and make a nexus between things that we think are taking too long and this will solve that actual length of time by doing this. Because part of my feeling is that once we get Trax upgraded version up and running and people know what a complete submittal is and it matches what they're asking for, a lot of this is going to go away. But that's just an assumption on my part. It would be really great if the staff could incorporate, you know, that too. Like with this upgrade to our system, here's the problems we think we're going to solve with that. And then whatever else you guys want to do, just so we have some kind of connection to problem, root cause analysis, this is the solution type of thing. That, that's just my thought as a good way to proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner Cosgrove. Staff does appreciate those types of comments. Just to manage expectations, this is a city council initiated item. And so staff can, we will provide some background based on our experience of processing applications and working with the code. However, the, I don't want to, I don't want to speak on behalf of the city council as far as the, the root causes that, that they feel are, were required to initiate this type of action. But staff will definitely have some background on what is being proposed and why it, and what it would address as far as streamlining is concerned.
Thank you. Because it is a public hearing, do we need, do we open it and close it or do we need to?
You could just say, you want to open it, then close it. Go ahead.
Want to open a public hearing? Do I, any speakers? Seeing none, close it. And I move that we continue this item until January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six PM in these same chambers.
With renotice.
With renotice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam passes five zero. Thank you. New business, establishment of commission meeting schedule?
Right, thank you, Chair McCann. So this item is to discuss next year's schedule for planning commission meetings as well as the first meeting in two thousand and twenty-four. This comes to you for typically to assist staff and the planning commission in determining vacations and time away from the city for coordination purposes. One thing I will mention and I apologize, the attachment that I had identified did not make it into the packet. I can go and put something up on the screen to, to show that holiday calendar. However, the dates that I have identified here, thank you. The dates that I've identified under the recommendation are the ones that would, would typically be canceled or be in close conflict with a holiday. There is one date, of course, that I forgot here and that is November twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-three. It is the day before the Thanksgiving. And so it might be wise for the planning commission to decide whether they want, would like to hold that meeting. Staff would prefer that we have a determination as far as what meetings are, are definitely canceled for next year so that we can, we can schedule applications far in advance rather than waiting a, a meeting or two ahead of time to determine whether we want to cancel. So I will leave it at that, but staff's recommendation is to cancel the meeting on January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, to cancel the meeting on July fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, cancel the meeting on January third, two thousand and twenty-four. And as part of recommendation number four, I would recommend that the council, or excuse me, that the commission determine whether they would like to hold the November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
As an option, could we request that it be double long and have a triple study session on that day?
That is actually under the purview of the planning commission, yes.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I can load up study sessions in advance.
Like nobody's business? I, it'd be my preference to schedule a cancellation for November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three.
I would agree.
With that, I guess I'm open to a motion?
I'll make a motion to cancel the meeting of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, to cancel the meeting of the planning commission on July five, two thousand and twenty-three, cancel planning commission meeting on January three, two thousand and twenty-four and cancel the planning commission meeting on November eleventh, twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second that.
It's the November twenty-second.
November twenty-second.
Oh, twenty-second.
November twenty-second.
Okay, sorry.
Or whatever.
Okay, I heard a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No old business. Reports of commissioners and staff. I see planning commissioners academy. Is there anything we want to talk about?
Before Adam does, that I highly recommend it for anybody who's, has the slightest interest in it. I've been into it a number of times and learned something new each time. And it's well worth the effort and will make you a better rounded commissioner and give you a lot of insight into other job possibilities.
Yes, so staff is.
Do we have available for funding?
Typically, we have done an alter, alternate, alternate, alternate years with four and three planning commissioners. Technically, we would have the funding this year to actually send everybody only because it's local. The league puts this academy on every year and it is not always in Southern California. Sometimes it requires hotels as well. Since it is local, we, we could send everybody. The only thing is we'd want to be cognizant of which meetings and, and the schedule that people are in just so that there's no inadvertent quorums, but that's not difficult to work around. And so this planning commission academy does occur March twenty-ninth through the thirty-first in two thousand and twenty-three in Garden Grove. And so I, I'll leave it up to the planning commission to tell me how many people are interested going this year, knowing that there's an, there will be an opportunity next year. However, since it's in Southern California this year, I assume that next year it'll be north. And so you'd have to, if you want to postpone it this year, it'd be nice to know that around this same time in two thousand and twenty-four, you'd be available for four days or so of travel and, and staying in overnight accommodations.
Could, could we just, if we're interested individually, approach you later after the meeting?
Absolutely.
It's on future date.
Yes, nothing needs to be decided here.
Say it over the dais, whatever.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's on everybody's radar and get that conversation started.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to talk about?
Yes.
We just finished a year, and I want to thank Irene White for being a recording secretary and making sense out of what we say, and she's the only one that can, and staff, and the whole commission. I think we've come, gelled and come together and are working well together, and let's do it again next year. This is the last meeting of the year.
I didn't realize it until you mentioned it.
Thank you, I agree.
Yep, I agree wholeheartedly. I'd also like to thank staff, especially, they put in a ton of hard work, and, you know, if you can pass that on, because most of them aren't here, that we see on a rotating And I thank whoever brought the crumble cookies as well. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas or Happy Holidays and Happy New Year.
Okay, dive into the crumble cookies. I did.
Oh, wow.
Thank you, Karen. So can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we have to do it to the first meeting in January, right?
The second.
January 18th.
On the 18th, January 18th, 2023.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, I think there's an error in the agenda, it's precise, to do 2023.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Close the meeting.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Irene.